Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing on the agenda tonight is to review and approve the agenda and we have a slight change to the agenda. Dr. Lutz.
In looking at the agenda, we moved the statement of accounts end of the year to action items instead of reports of recognition. It says, Ms. Harris, after she goes through and explains the end of the year statement to us, we'll want a motion to approve the transfers and also accept the report itself. So, since it had the motions attached, we move to action.
Excellent. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Gene, second. Penny, next. All who's in favor? unanimous. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of July 21st meeting. Can I? Thank you. Second. Great. All in favor? unanimous. Comments from the public? To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes are allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on. Before we start with reports and recognition, I'm gonna give a quick shout out to Duquesne's very own Kurt DeSally. I don't know those of you who are watching the Yankee game this weekend. Kurt has been called up to the major leagues. He's playing for the Tampa Bay Rays and they were playing against our own Yankees. It was a perfect outcome. Kurt played well, had a really good series, and the Yankees won. Three, two of the three games, so it all worked out. But he's doing great, he's had a tremendous time, and he's playing really well, and we're all real proud of him. Next on the agenda of reports and recognitions, the technology services update. Mr. Barnett. Do you want to be on the discussion?
I would love to give Scott a quick introduction here. We are thrilled to introduce Mr. Barnett, who is our technology services manager. He began earlier this summer, jumped right in with both feet, began learning about our system, getting up to speed on everything that we were doing, and working with members of his department to set up a structure for some great success. As you know, technology, the infrastructure work we've been doing, and thinking forward, last meeting we had the X to one presentation, all the work around technology has been a high priority for our district. Mr. Barnett comes into this position for us at just the right time to help us to continue traveling that path and to realize the great things that are at stake.
Thank you, Dr. Lutz. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board, and members of our district staff as well that are here today. I'm happy to give you an update on our latest project, the CPS infrastructure update, and also wanted to give you a moment to tell you a little bit about the structure that we put in place with the organization. ICT formerly the group that encompassed both the digital learning side and also technology services is now district technology services, and it's comprised of three sets of teams: the network team, the data team, and the user support team. Our network team covers operations, accounts, security, phone systems, typical backend systems as we would know it, and our manager is Brandon Rush, who some of you may already know. Our data team is items such as Blackboard Connect, Power School, our registrar services, and other data services within the district, and our manager there is Rick Brewer. And then our user support team is the help desk operations, our break and fix, our A/B systems and setups, and Ian McQ is the manager there. These gentlemen have been working, I've gotten to know them very well in the last two months, and they've been working very hard so that we could have a successful summer, and I think we are very close to completing a lot of the tasks that were put before us as I stepped on the team in July. So I'd like to talk for a moment about the infrastructure project overview and give you a sense of where we're at with it. This involved the upgrade of our major network switches at both the high school and Saks in its Phase One component, and this also included the fiber backbone between the core switches in the high school and our other network locations. And our goal with this was to improve both the speed and the breadth of the network, but also 100% educational space coverage in areas where either signal was weak for the wireless side or that we did not have access in. We've attempted to repair that by putting additional backbone capacity and speed in place, and also really increase the speed to desktop and the number of access points across the campus, to campuses. JKS was selected as your vendor of choice earlier this year prior to my time here, and it was for an upgrade of the network infrastructure and wireless systems in this Phase One project. And that was again focusing on Saks and the high school. Work began in June, and the scope here was to upgrade all the wired switches in speed capacity, insert new fiber backbone in between the major switches to increase the speed of the network, and also improve and expand the number of access points at both Saks and the high schools so that the wireless network would extend into a lot of different areas of the schools where they formerly did not or formerly had weak signal. The work completion is now at a stage where the system equipment and upgrades all happened by 8:12, and the software configuration has happened since that date, and the final system testing is underway this week actually, and we did a walkthrough today, and have a short punch-up list item to go through to finalize things by the end of this week. What does this bring us to? Well, the first thing it did is in our closets, for instance, the wiring upgrades, and this is, you know, an example of a closet that's, you know, almost perfectly wired and very clean looking, and that's a very professional looking network closet. And this has been replicated across several of our closets, all of our closets in the high school and all of our closets at Saks. Okay? Now, you probably saw an image like this back when the presentation was given about the original problems with your network. And here I've updated this, and if you compare it against one of your original drawings, you'll see that we basically improved the speed of the network at the backbone level to the 10 gig level, and then the bottlenecks that have been removed at the device level and then out to the wired devices increased the level to a 1,000 megabit per second network across the wired devices. Now, our wireless devices, it's interesting, we had a good amount of speed, but we've now upgraded it to basically just short of that 1,000 setting, in the 900 to 1,000 setting. And the number of access points really increased the capacity, but more importantly, as we'll see in a moment, increased the sort of width of the highway, the ability, the number of people that could be on the system. Because your real bottleneck at the time was not so much speed, but was actually the breadth or the width of the highway. So by now adding more access points and access points that have dual band, this dual band ability allows different devices to select and automatically select which part of the network to be on. And for one example of that, if you look at it from the point of view of the new high gain antennas allow us, and this broader band antennas, an example in the library is the old access points could handle anywhere from 25 to 50 users before they capped out. The new access points can handle between 150 to 200. So theoretically, up in that same high school library space that now has four access points, you could potentially handle up to 800 users at the same time in a space that formerly only could handle about 150. You know, this speed factor comes into play when we look at the types of networks, and I won't go into what a G and an N and AC network are, but we now are up to a level where that AC speed that's nearing the 900 mark there increases both the speed for the end user, but also again, this broader highway makes more people able to get on the highway. Now that's a basic overview of the changes we've made and the upgrades we've made that are in place for the backend of the network, but I wanted to give you just a moment to get a sense of what's next for district technology services. We do know that there's a need for continued future upgrades to the elementary school network backbone and update to their elementary wireless systems. We have in storage now the access points to put in place for those schools, and then the next step in the Phase Two of this is to do fiber wiring and additional wiring in those schools to increase again and broaden and widen the network in those spaces as well. But also, it's not all about this network backend in what we're doing. We want to improve in the next year, and I'm looking closely at the data management and security improvements that we can do throughout our system, and I may, I'm looking at different ways that we can both improve access to data for people, but also make sure that we are continuing to keep that data and information secure and in the right hands. And then, we also believe that the changes for district technology allow us to focus more on technical support enhancement and customer service improvements. One of the main things I said when I was first coming into this is that I really want to have us have a customer service approach that helps the teacher in the classroom or the administrator, you know, get their job done. And I've, throughout the time that I've worked with these gentlemen and the ladies that work in our group, I've really emphasized that sort of customer service approach that we want, you know, at a service-first orientation, solve the problem or respond in a way that they know you're working to solve the problem, so that they can have expectations. And really, I come from a background in project management where it is about setting and managing expectations, and that is often done through good communication and making sure people know what you're up to and what you're doing to help solve the problem, whether that's as simple as my mouse or keyboard aren't working in the classroom, my projector isn't projecting correctly, or more complicated situations such as connectivity of a device or a box to the network. I'd be happy to entertain any of your questions at this time about our projects and about district technology services. Yes, sir?
Hi, Mr. Goodman. On the AC, I assume at this point that there are very, very few devices way back to use AC. Am I correct?
Yeah, at this time, the number of devices that go into that space is limited. Our N network is fast, but the AC devices are not yet heavily in place. But it does set us up for a future orientation for that speed of the network.
I would assume in a year or two, there'll be most, or many devices we had that.
As we begin to look at upgrades to equipment and such, yes, if that option's available in the device of wireless, we would definitely be looking at it.
Another question, on the wireless upgrades page, we show the standard antenna versus the high gain antenna. How representative is the extended range in the diagram of the actual extended range of the high gain antenna, or maybe to put it more simply, how much further can the high gain antennas even deploy reach versus what we had before?
Well, the N and ACs can go 250 feet or so or more in a perfect environment with no obstructions and such, and sometimes more, but they'll be rated to about 250, 300. The present system is often only about 75 to 100 feet, so it's doubling the length space in most cases. We'll look at certain, right now, there's no devices outside of the buildings, but the signal does creep outside slightly. But if you were to put antennas outdoors, you might go with a higher gain antenna even further if you wanted to extend that length. But a lot of our issues, especially say at Saks, were related to the makeup of the building and the concrete walls, which really cut down on the signal. So in Saks, you have an AP in every classroom, as opposed to in this building, there's a lot of areas where the APs can handle and push through the existing construction.
Are we using any form of repeaters in the network, or is it basically just a router?
These are all straight line runs to all these APs. If there's a need for a repeater, it would be in a case where we have to run over 300 feet of cable to a space. We haven't done that with any of this particular upgrade. We may see a need for that somewhere in the future, but right now, we're not using any repeaters in this upgrade.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Ms. Harris?
I wanted to also mention, because this was the project that we and the board was most interested in, it had caused the most discussion throughout the entire budget process, but there's a number of other things that have been going on over the summer as well. As you recall fully, one quarter of our leased equipment was replaced. This team, along with the entire team of technicians, have brought in that equipment, have moved around equipment so that it can be more effectively used. And Scott and the team can talk a little bit more if you're interested, but for instance, thin clients that weren't necessarily effective in their current settings were moved around into labs, to libraries where they could be highly effective. At the same time, as we closed out school, 100% of our team was out in the schools, boxing up, controlling all of the classrooms' technologies so that the custodians could get in over the summertime and clean, and then have redeployed all of that in an organized and absolutely on-target process. If any of you come up to the third floor at 39 Locust, you'll look and poke your head into technology, you'll notice that there's a whole operations board scheduled with all kinds of activities. They were all strung out across this very large whiteboard with the magnetic signs, and I think, what, Ian, maybe 85% are now with the Dutton power?
Yes, at least.
And that took a tremendous amount of teamwork, of planning, of making allowances for vacations as well, and under Scott's leadership, but with these three managers managing their teams and effort, it's been an extraordinary summer, and I just want to congratulate all of them.
Well, I would just add that before, I'd like to thank the great help of, it's been a great crew that I've met at the district office and at the schools, and the group that Mr. Willoughby runs has been extremely helpful to us as well. We've worked very well in coordinating our efforts with them and timing so that both things could move in, move out. So, it's been a team effort across the board, no one person should stand here and take credit for it. I think these gentlemen and the teams that they lead have been very helpful in getting us done, and we took an approach this summer of everybody roll up their sleeves, doesn't matter what you do, let's all get in the game to do this, and over 250 new units are going out in the field to replace old units, and it's quite a job in terms of logistics. But I think we've approached it with a good foundation that Ian and the rest of the team here put together so that we can organize for success and back plan for success. So we look forward to really making it a great school year for our administrators, our teachers, and the students.
Let me just ask you a couple of quick questions. I know when we talked about this before, and obviously we didn't include you, we looked at the scheduling of most of this infrastructural change over two years, and this being sort of Phase One, and I guess the elementary school is being Phase Two. When we begin the school year, only from Wednesday, this phase will be finished for the most part. Is that it for the high school and Saks, or are the upgrades all in place now in terms of infrastructure?
The only elements that I could see being added would be additional new educational spaces or athletic spaces that need network support, but for the sake of argument of what was laid on the table to you and the size of the scope of this project, yes, the high school and Saks would be finished at this point, and then we'd be turning our attention to the elementary schools. And, you know, what we can accomplish over this next year may be dependent on budget, may be dependent on time, but the fact is that we've targeted, you know, upgrades to the APs there that is already moving along and gonna be in place, it's just timing again, and because the summer is really the best opportunity to take the network down and start doing larger projects like this, that's the way we would target for elementary. But other than outdoor access or access to different facilities that are off-site or not attached to Saks or the high school, I don't see any other upgrades in this particular infrastructure project.
Scott, remember that we also had an $80,300 state grant, and so as we bid out the network upgrade, we also included that, and JKS was awarded that as well. So there's been some small amount of work there.
Okay, and that was from my next question. How would we do in terms of coming in on schedule, on schedule obviously, and having on budget?
Both.
Both?
On time, on budget.
Excellent. So my last question is, as we look around at college campuses and whatnot, we've seen that the outside areas are wired. You can literally be in between buildings, sitting outside. Have we thought about that for?
Yeah, I've examined a couple ideas in first the high school campus space, and trying to get a sense first from, you know, really anecdotally from people, how much do the students congregate and what spaces do they use before you target that? One area right away is some of the sports fields, pushing out in those directions some signal, because there's a lot of activity going on, a lot of practices, a lot of games, a lot of parents, a lot of friends coming by in those spaces. I think once school starts and I wander by a few times and get a sense of where they do congregate, we can then get a sense whether, A, you want to be using any of those outdoor spaces for either teaching or other purposes, and target those first with signal, and then, second, are they congregating where you want them to congregate? That's a different issue that we can't address through technology, but I think that it is important to look at your campus from the sense of, do you look upon it as a shared space, do you use the college comparison? And if there is that sense that you want the students around, you want them using the space indoors, outdoors, you know, be it 18 hours a day, 12 hours a day, whatever it is, then you want to give them the opportunity to use those spaces in the same way that there's lounge areas that you use outside, where they might eat or have refreshments and things. Those obviously would be good targeted areas. But anywhere where large crowds come together, be it the stadium, be it the ballfields, those are good opportunities to push signal out to, and not necessarily difficult to do.
Very well, I'm glad you think about it. Anybody else?
I just want to say thank you for the update and the board. I think you get the sense it's highly interested in this. Having the right technology backbone for all five of our schools is critical, and so as you get into it and you see what resources we need, please note that we're supporting you and we'd like to hear what you have to say. Thank you, and your whole team, to everybody who's here or not here tonight for all the hard work this summer. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate the opportunity to give you an update, and contact me anytime, I'll be happy to come here and speak with you at any time.
Great. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is an enrollment update. Mr. Cass?
Sure, just a very quick word. I thought that since the last time we spoke in July, there's been a little bit of shifting of enrollment, and as we anticipated, some increase, so Mr. Cass and Ian as well, we're just gonna give you a very quick update about where we are as far as enrollment goes, as that does drive our staffing, as you know. The full staffing report is in October, after we go through, we begin the year in our October one enrollments and those things, but this is just to give you another picture for marking time as we prepare to open. Just a little bit over, we?
Well, thank you so much. Coming around, our two handouts, the usual updates that I usually see, the first one is around the 14, 15 enrollment projections. So this, this shows you a couple of things from the bigger picture in that the increase in enrollment since October 1st last year has been primarily in the elementary level, 72 more students, and that is very much the reason why we have added some sections to the elementary level. Saks UC is down about 18, high school up 10, and you can see overall the K-12 total there. The other sheet I wanted to give you was more specific information that the board has requested around the average class size and the sections at the elementary level. So this one gives you also kind of the view of where we are in terms of elementary this year, and the average class sizes across the district. We did add sections in kindergarten and first grade, you can see those have worked out well within our enrollment class size guidelines. But overall, interestingly, we are only up one section at the elementary level from 82 this year from 81 last year. So overall, just a 1.0 increase of FTE at the elementary level. Some of these enrollment increases have necessitated other additions to staffing, and those include increases in special education area to the equivalent of about 1.1 FTE, which includes part-time positions in occupational therapy, physical therapy, and special education teacher. And the other area that we're looking at is increasing in special education teacher assistance. So we wanted to, Darlene, I wanted to talk a little bit about what happened with those increases, why did we get those two areas, 1.1 FTE in teacher and about 6.0 teacher assistant. So Darlene, just gotta talk a little bit about that.
Well, as Gary mentioned, the increase in enrollment on the elementary level is very much reflected in the percentage of identified students who have come into the district totally unanticipated. That number totals 14, and those are students from the pre-k level through grade four, and these are students that were completely not on our radar, who moved in from other towns, and I'm aware of where they're moving, keeping a record of that. The largest number of students are at South School. We have six unanticipated students of relatively deep need, and you may remember back to the October 1st staff utilization report last year, in which the special education teacher FTEs at South were low, and they have been for a couple of years now, apparently speaking. East has always been at 4.0, West has been at 4.8 excluding the pre-k teachers, and South has been at 3.5. So annually, Principal Rocco and I have had a dialogue around whether we needed to increase that. We've chosen not to, we managed well, it's not gonna be possible this year with the six additional students who do have some deep needs. We also have four unanticipated students in the coming into the preschool program, and two students, unanticipated students in the four to three system who will be coming in in October who have severe need as well. And so, we also have a bulk of students who are transitioning from pre-k program into East School who have severe need, the number of those is six, that we did know about. The paraprofessional situation in terms of addition is because we can't move those TAs to East, we've now got to use 48 additional preschool students who are moving in, four of whom in total are coming with an IMP document from another town or state that dictates that they need a one-on-one paraprofessional. So that's an obligation that we have to meet by law, and there are four of those. I have also been kind of keeping a record of the specific category of disability, so we follow this with Mary Andy Felice, who is our elementary coordinator. And you know, I think the planning that we did through May and June was well on target, and again, these are students who moved in with no knowledge of, so. So the occupational therapy services at point two, the physical therapy services at point one are needed.
Just as another piece of this update, on Wednesday we begin our annual new teacher induction and we will have thirty-four teachers in this room that, that morning, that, you know, for the day. And that includes, thirty-four includes some long-term, some that be oriented to the district on Wednesday. And they will be in these sessions over the next three days, as you all know. The other hires to date include six teacher assistants as well. There are some minor openings, these teacher assistants that Darlene was just talking about are still vacant. And so we'll be working over these, this next week or so to finalize our staffing, be ready to start at the beginning of the school year and put control to it.
Gary, what kind of degree does the TA, is the TAs, or are the TAs required to have?
Well, we're usually looking at, to the degree that we can do it in this environment, to hire certified teacher types that have teacher certification. Always love doing that. But we're always looking for a minimum for a teacher assistant to have at least sixty credit hours at the university level. And then we would consider their candidacy.
And Scott, in special education, we typically hire only certified teachers and very often they are doing certified in general education as well as special.
I have one more question. We seem to be adding special education students at a substantial rate. Is that being experienced by other towns or are we attractive to families with children with special needs?
Actually, Dr. Lutz and I were having a conversation about this a few days ago. I think that if we, if we look at the history of enrollment comparatively, I look at it annually in around October to the other districts, our enrollments haven't been higher and certainly our identification rate has been much lower than many other towns. And so that is why I'm keeping track of where they're coming from. And our special education coordinator, some of you may know her, is very actively engaged with families. And so she is kind of the contact person when families come here for preschool through, actually, fifth grade student. And I've had extensive dialogue with her around the conversations that she's had with families around why they're moving in. It varies. You know, I think the positive is that we have a good reputation in the community and generally people are very happy with the services they receive. And, you know, I don't know the decisions that families are making now as opposed to in the recent past around which community in the area they want to move into. And so that might be something interesting to think about and look into, but it could be that.
This is also an area that we manage very closely. When we look at TAs, we look at point one, point two, and we're very careful and we look at it very closely. So when we do have the enrollment increase, we have to make adjustments because we don't have ways to sort of absorb them because we do manage it each and every year. And we've been reducing our teaching assistance wherever we can throughout the last couple of years. And we think that at this point we've sort of hit a spot where we still have any other options. You know, there's nowhere to sort of squeeze out another FTE through existing or anything else because Darlene is, she keeps a very close eye on us. She works with Carol and Mary Ann and they manage it very closely because we know that, you know, how important it is.
The additions are very unusual. Typically, we've cut paraprofessional positions in the last few years.
And may I ask a question? Yeah?
I just wanted to sort of comment, Gary, about the enrollment levels and the student, the numbers of students in the elementary grades because it's something I've sort of watched over the years. And while we're only highlighting two second grade, the average class sizes in two of the second grade classes, six out of the fifteen grades have enrollments that are bumping up at the top or slightly over, you know, when you average them out. I mean, I look at the, at West, the second and third grades are slightly above when you average them. I don't know what they are by class, but I look at the third grade at South is slightly above. I look at the third grade at East and it's, you know, a rounding error where it's almost at the twenty. I, you know, I think that we're maybe doing, I think we need to be mindful of pointing that out, especially as we approach budget season because these numbers have been disconcerting to me for a few years. And I think we need to really take a good look at what's happening in our elementary school enrollment and class sizes. So it's just...
And that's with the October report, if we can really dig into that a little bit and look at this story. This, we still, you know, having not started the school year yet, there's still some in the rolls that they come in, they go out, so we've got to look at that stuff. So as we, as the October report all comes together, we'll have some sort of, still looking at that conversation.
I was just wondering if you all could give me a little bit of, kind of thinking of the analysis that went into the second grade classes at East and South that are, you know, over guideline. I know at East, we're actually out of space. We only, we only have twenty-nine classrooms, so adding, counting there would be hard. At South, we're twenty-seven, we could have added. I know we were running into budgetary constraints because we've had other additions to the budgets, or I just wanted to understand kind of the thinking of the team and, you know, having the classes at those levels.
Well, the reason that we highlighted that, as was pointed out, is those are sections that we are watching very closely. We've been watching them all summer. Those particular grade levels have hovered right around the same numbers throughout summer. We were worried that, you know, with the increasing enrollment happening at the elementary level, that this would be something we would have to, you know, really address. But in our conversations with the elementary principals, they all felt very strongly about moving forward. They much preferred that, as we kind of looked at enrollment, that the kindergarten and first grade sections were the ones that we, we've actually made some change in. And then the other worry is certainly at East of moving past twenty-nine sections. So it was certainly a consideration that principals have raised and, same at West with twenty-nine sections as well. But the point, the point made here today is well taken. We certainly need to take a much closer look in terms of enrollment and capacity. We have a committee that is a standing committee that we will still be convening this fall to really take a look at the numbers, what it means, and how we, how we really decide to move forward.
Just because those classes are over our guidelines, having done anything, we look also at adding additional specialists to help out with a slightly higher than one, you know, desired ratio? And adding an addition, we talked about what we had for the specialty.
Yes, we actually have talked about that. We have not made that addition yet. That has not been a request that principals have made of us yet, although it is certainly something that we can do and we're going to continue to monitor as we, as we move forward. I think we're also looking at scheduling across and looking at the best ways to use the resources that we have. We do that each year, but we're looking to, you know, how can we maximize what we have in order to best, you know, best cover, best...
No, that's terrific, I just...
We have a, you know, a technology integrator at the elementary levels that'll be doing some, some helping out with that as well and sort of share it between some buildings. So there's, so I think some, some creative approaches to the problem solving around it. But as Gary mentioned, it was really in conversation with the principals around what, how does this look? How is this going to work? And it's sort of always in contact with them regularly. The elementary principals meet at least weekly, you know, throughout the summer. They look at the numbers that, you know, Gary and Jill sort of talk to them about where we are and anticipation and things. So again, the numbers may shift again, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there. So there's always a risk. If you're just at that class size guideline and then we open school and ten students don't come, you know, that's the other side of that coin, right? So we're trying, we try to be as responsible with the resources that we have. And that's where, when we hit that breaking point kindergarten, we went right ahead and did what we had to do there. At second grade, they're feeling that even if all the students come and we stay put, that we're well structured and resourced in order to meet all those student needs.
And I think what's also important is we talked when we went through the enrollment and study capacity group, one of the areas that kept coming up over and over was scheduling the elementary school and to make it balanced and putting all three elementary schools on a six-day rotation so that they were all getting the same amount of art and music and TV and technology and computers. So we did do that and I think that was what was helpful in determining how we went out scheduling for those grade levels that had six or more, letting out all of the schools on that six-day rotation, which has allowed us not to have to increase in those special areas and allowed us to really pick out of the box and utilize the specialists and that's capacity still staying within our contract as well with them. And I do want to point out that probably about two weeks ago, West second grade was yellow as well, it was highlighting. So I think how I, you know, is right in the sense that sometimes you lose one, you gain one, sometimes they move over to another elementary school, that's what makes that highlight over to South. So it is really in flux right now up until October first, but we did lose one, so that's what produced the yellow from the West second grade.
I just have a question. If on October first, it turns out that we have three more second graders that come in at least, and now we get to twenty-four more, do we then go back in and do something at that point or is that...
We would not split, you know, we would not split a classroom at that point. If there, if we find that other resources could be added to help, maybe there's someone who's working point six and maybe going point seven, possibly, but we wouldn't, we would not split a classroom.
All right, so the kindergarten is the, I mean, the projections were fifty-two off what are we at, fifty-two low. So, I mean, I know from when we looked at this before that, and it's a testament to the per education we give our students, but I think that's fantastic. I guess what I'm wondering is, and you might not know off the top of your head, maybe if you go on Friday Notes or something, but I remember when they looked at this, this number, they projected kindergarten, what they do is they take kind of the number of persons, the town, and then they put a multiplier on it. And so I'm just wondering what the standard multiplier is, what the multiplier is that they're using for Duquesne and what the average multiplier, I mean, they're clearly not using a big enough multiplier, at least for this year. So I don't know if we can, you know, when we start looking at next year, the projections, we need to have discussion with NSDEX about using a different multiplier to help plan.
Yeah, it's, this is a very complementary problem to have, right? It's the, you know, this, as Darlene was saying, the strength of our system, the strength of our programs, people aren't continually, you know, attracted into, into our district. So the, we don't, I don't know the multipliers offhand, I don't think anybody's, but certainly I can, you can find that information out and share with you.
Yeah, I think Gary is...
You know, I think it'd be good for that enrollment study group to really dig into those numbers a bit and, and see how close do they look. I do know that, again, the kindergarten part is all new for me, but I do know that it is more, more art than science trying to figure all of this. The kindergarten enrollment is very difficult in any town because you just don't know. And there's some, some new programs open up, new other, some daycare, maybe the nursery schools might start offering kindergarten. You just don't know sort of how it all flows, so it's very difficult. But yeah, we'll take a look at it and maybe that group can spend a little bit more time digging into those numbers. Well, we certainly will. And, you know, you can even see over these past several years that, you know, that, you know, sometimes it's forty above and sometimes it's forty below. And that's what we have seen and, but it is something that we will raise again with our projections.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've talked about that a number of times and thank you, Ben, for bringing that up, I didn't have to.
I have a question.
But I was going to say, it's not always just a matter of Duquesne is a great place to go and a lot of people move here. It's because some years three hundred people enroll and some years two hundred eighty-nine people enroll. It's more a matter of, it's, and I recognize it's difficult, but the inaccuracy is astounding. And we're off by almost twenty percent. And I know that we've, we've looked at things like the nursery schools and what they're doing, some kid, you know, parents hold kids back and we know all of the vagaries, but I can't help but believe there is some way to manage that other than to wait until they show up at the door and then go out and scramble for teachers.
I just thought, given the relationship that's studying that you're doing for just far in Duquesne, I'm just curious, does that also go across people of Carroll County or other people in our D I Ts that just, use type of communities because we're so close to New York? Are we all in D A, whereas other areas are, you know, trying, supposed to be, that the number's supposed to be going down, but obviously that's not true. Is it just for us because we're particularly good or is it also all our neighboring towns? It's just our section of Carroll County is just different set of rules than everybody else?
Yeah, we're seeing these increases in the Durgay districts very often, but there are many towns, I will tell you, that are experiencing significant reductions in enrollment. So I don't have that data with me, but it's certainly something for us to continue to look at, look at.
I do want to just point out that being an elementary principal at one point, I do want to say that having all of the registration in one centrally located place has been very helpful. And I do want to say that this year, we were able to predict the enrollment increase much earlier than end of the year in the past. So when we were adding those kindergarten sections in, it was early July, where I would have to say that in the years past, it has been closer to end of July. So we are tracking people by using our online, by having people go to the website, by having people register, having someone say on top of that, track that paperwork that has come in, has been very helpful in helping us plan. It doesn't help with the numbers when we're looking at it here in advance to say, why are we off twenty percent? But it has helped us as we're moving from January to July with really tracking the families that are moving to the community and most people that are registering their children as well as the drawing.
And I will say in NSDEX's defense, it's really only the kindergarten that's been helping. They've done a pretty good job of predicting how many first graders will move up to second grade. Anybody else? Great. Thank you. South School Facilities Project Update.
Well, I am very pleased to tell you that phase one of the South School Windows Project has been successfully completed. The, as you may recall, phase one was to remove all glass block in the non-teaching spaces. So we left the glass block in the gymnasium, in the cafeteria, and we have some inner courtyard spaces such as the library that we also chose to leave as part of, for phase two. It was concluded on August eighth, which is a week ago Friday. The company that we had hired, Niram, was fantastic. They were on time, they were neat, they were thorough. Our experts, both from our owner's rep, Slam, both Eugene Terone and Juanita, I'm losing her last name, I'm sorry, were, were great. We had somebody from Slam on the job every day, not necessarily all day, every day. And from Ty and Bond, either Amy Valencourt or one of her staff, Michelle Rudy, were on site all the time so that they could take tests, they could monitor, they could ensure that all containment remained intact, that all of the materials were removed properly, that they were stored in locked containers, et cetera. We had such... We had such confidence in Niram as they were moving along. And if any of you have gone by South at this point in time, I have to tell you from a personal perspective, as you look at where the glass block was, and it's covered in plywood, covered by Tyvek, covered by a rubber membrane and boards to keep it so that it's all weather tight, it actually looks neater and less jarring than the original glass block. And now you can see the comparison between the gymnasium and the Tyvek covered space. So it was really, really a success, to the point that the building committee in our discussions in July determined that we were, it looked like we were going to close on time for phase one. And we determined that we would remove the window or a window wall in room 102 at South, which we'd been using as a conference room, and it was not needed for a classroom for this upcoming year. And as it turns out, it was a great decision on the part of the committee in that the window, we couldn't just remove one window, we needed to remove the entire window wall. And by the way, the door and frame was part of that whole window wall assembly. And so all of it had to be removed. And the install on that entire wall structure was considered tricky. I know that's a highly technical term. We had to cut into the overhang inside the classroom and outside the classroom, also how it was set into the sills area. And this will allow for the purpose. And the end results will be that our architectural team can develop a much more detailed specification. We did this with the goal of eliminating as many unforeseen conditions as we possibly could. And I think that this particular choice was a home run. That project, the containment went up as soon as Niram was wrapping up the upper level glass block, just tidying up. And the window wall removal began and, on Monday, the 11th, was completed by the 12th. We had worked with Ty and Bond to make sure that they had put in reservations for specific testing turnaround 24 hours so that we could move Joanne and her central team back into the school on Friday. And this school was opened up to staff at 10:00 AM this morning. So we're done for phase one. The committee will be working with our design professionals. Our next meeting is on next Thursday, the 28th. We'll be talking more details in terms of specifications because we intend to go out to bid in fall. So it was a success story on phase one, and I want to thank both Penny and Jean for all of their hard work.
I too think the committee's done a great job. Penny and Jean, I know you guys have worked very hard. The rest of us appreciate that. Anytime we finish a phase on time on budget, it's always a good thing.
I'd like to say that Penny and Bob and others on the committee and support members have worked harder than we have worked. Definitely been very successful. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
I just want to also thank Nancy for sort of shepherding this project through, you know, it does take that point person to, to make it all happen and pull it all together. And Junior's absolutely right, Bob and the work of his crew, and they've been on the ball. They've been responsive to every need that's come up. They've been quick to act. And when we needed anything, they're right on it. And to think that the construction ended, a week later, the building's open, the teachers are there, it's clean, it's ready to go, it's really a testament to everybody's focus. But all of it was made possible through Nancy's vigilance, communication, and really thoughtful approach to all of it.
But also, it was a collaboration with the town. On Thursday, we had our final walkthrough. And at that final walkthrough, Brian and I were there, our representatives from Ty and Bond and from SLAM, Bob Willoughby, of course, who has just seen everything through from start to finish, but Jen Eilson, who's the head sanitarian from the town, as well as Fred Baker, the fire marshal. And because of the discussions, the walkthroughs, and the awareness ahead of time of what we were doing, and the continuous communication among and between staffs, we were able to get from both Ty and Bond, SLAM, and then permission from our architectural firm sent to Brian Platts, who's our building inspector, that indicated that occupancy was warranted and that all tests had been, had been received and came back clear. So that, again, there was an inter-agency collaboration that, again, Fred and Jen just dropped everything for us when they needed to, and that was so much appreciated.
Next on the agenda are the action items. And the item, the first item is a statement of accounts, the year end. I guess we have two parts to that. We need approval of transfers listed on page two of the year end report, date to date 1814, and also to accept the year end financial report as presented. Let's see.
I'd love to. Absolutely. Well, if you remember back in July, Nancy gave us a preliminary overview of the statement of accounts. And we had, she talked about this looking similar to what the end of the year financial will look like, but we still had some payrolls and some other things to sort of finish up. So now we're here with the, the actual end of the year report. That, so we've closed out our year, we've gone through our financials, and we're ready to give you that, that summary piece. And Nancy, will you take us through?
And as part of this, normally you're used to seeing the back three pages of the report, and you listened to me kind of take you through some of the highlights. Here for the end of the year report, I thought it was appropriate to try and articulate in writing from a historical perspective so that not only the Board of Education, but our funding bodies can also see what we have done this year with the appropriation that was afforded us in, in the resource management realm. Clearly, we have ended with turning back to the town $134,778. That's made up of a lot of moving pieces. And you can see that the surpluses were in the salary accounts. We had small surplus in other expenses. You can see that all of the other categories were over expanded for a variety of reasons. I attempted to create a small narrative for you by those categories so that you could kind of read the words along with the financial statement, looking at the different percentages of pluses and minuses. Part of what we saw as a major discussion item was the $488,000 deficit in our outplace tuitions. We were able to compensate for some of that, one, because we had savings in regular education transportation. We had avoided adding, we had removed a bus for the 1314 year, plus we were able to take advantage of a 1% discount by paying in advance in September and in February. And again, that was a collaboration with the town finance director. In addition, with the leasing and replacement of some of our older vehicles in the special ed transportation category, we were able to, again, create a surplus. So that helped mitigate the deficit in the tuitions account. I think that our facilities operation, again, was relatively on target. You'll see that overall, with all of those different accounts, it basically was flat. We had a deficit of $17,873, so it was less than one half of 1%. Again, percentages versus dollars oftentimes can be helpful. And so if you look at the eight major categories on page one of three in the financial statement, I think that that's a nice first blush look at it, and you're used to seeing this framework. As you turn that page, you can see the details of pluses and minuses. And so why don't I stop, tell you that there's a new state law that requires the board, as you approve transfers, we will then be required to inform our funding bodies. I think all of you were informed of that a number of months ago. And so that's why we wanted this transfer to be an action item. What this does is tidy up. It removes dollars from account balances, from the eight lines where there's a positive fund balance, and backfills and covers those negative fund balances. And once you have approved this, we will forward this report on to the selectmen, to the Board of Finance, and to the town council, which will serve as the notice to them on those transfers. The second motion is simply to accept the report, which really could be a consensus, but it's also pretty typical that boards of education would take a motion. So let me stop and have you ask questions.
On supplies and materials, if you could show us 129,000 change, and in the, in the write-up, you say, "extra supplies and materials are worth spending like 330,000", so I suspect there's a common, missing or common misplaced there.
No, actually, it, I'm sorry, if you turn to page three of three, you'll see, let's see.
Three of four, okay.
The very last page in the actual numbers, and you'll see that there's $68,460 deficit in instructional supplies, and it's actually instructional and other supplies. The software services is a negative.
Right, but if you go to page three or four, grid and park, again, there's an extra zero in there or something. Past line supplies and materials, you have to...
Yes. Before we send it anywhere, I will correct that. It, it has an extra three.
Well, something's on here.
It is. It's 3,273, not 330,000. So I will correct, and before we post it anywhere, absolutely, I said, "thank you". And I edited this. I edited this.
An extra seven up, I expect. Anybody else? Penny?
I just noticed that we underspent the category of expenditure levels for travel professional opportunities, you know, that there had to be some give and take. I was wondering, this board a number of years ago authorized specifically a certain amount of money for the guidance part to go on college business. Was that part of, were those parts of funds that were not expended? Not their own professional development is correct, I was pointing to go.
No, those, those funds are, that's under the professional development account, but we, those were extended last year with the understanding that they're very specifically placed there as part of the vision and mission for the department. You know, I can't say 100%, but they were, those, those funds were actively used. So I would say, no, that's not, that's not that money there. This money comes primarily from, contractually, we have money that is set aside each year for teachers to use in each building. And so that money at the end is aggregated, and that's the total there.
And there's also administrative contractual obligations as well. And some administrators utilize that, some do not. But the terms of the contract required that we provide that, we afford that opportunity.
But the guidance ones were used by the...
Okay, terrific, thank you. Then I guess I have another question I have. I think we had a prior board meeting, we'd said that because we had the increase in special education expenditures, that the actual amount of the excess cost grant that the town got back was greater than what we had budgeted.
That's correct.
But the $616,000, we don't show that anywhere on this sheet. I'm just wondering, I'm sure that's generally accepted county principals, but I'm just wondering if you could maybe address why we don't show that?
I would be glad to. Actually, a few years ago, the funding bodies actually funded the board's budget net of the excess cost. I had been told when I started a year ago that that was still the case. And in discussing and looking back, discussing with the town finance director and looking back in the records of the town call and all the actions taken by both the Board of Finance and the town council, they actually appropriated gross. They did not net the budget. So as you see, when we first began the budget process, we were talking about a $77,323,274 budget. And my first couple of statements of accounts to you showed it to you that way, and then I backed out or netted. And then once I found out that we, our appropriation was higher, then all I did was show that that was the amount budgeted, but it did not impact our budget at all. And again, for the 1415 year, the council and the Board of Finance appropriated at gross. So what happens is the town is booking that in as revenue. And if it's less revenue than budgeted, that's the way it goes. If it's more revenue than budgeted, then they'll take that in as additional revenue. But if there's any pluses or minuses as the state tidies up, then they, they take the pluses or minuses as well. They'll never look back to us. And quite frankly, probably about 50% of the school districts and towns, budget net, and the town automatically passes along the excess cost grant as what we would call a cash book credit or a credit to expenditures directly to the board. The other 50% handle it the way it is now done. And I think that in Bridgeport, where Dawn came from, they automatically take it in as a revenue. And so that's probably what, what precipitated the change. So it's just a different stuff. It ends up exactly the same way.
One more question else?
Yeah, please.
So are we going to get an end of year report on all the grants and everything that we got from states and the excess cost grant as well as...
Yes. I'm anticipating at the next board meeting, I will provide a report on all the other funds, including state and federal grants, summer enrichment, facilities, school lunch. I just ran out of time.
That's interesting. Thank you.
So I have a question. The, the way I understood... The way I understood, and maybe this is where the problem begins, is that we have expenditures for outside placements. And then the state reimburses us certain amounts for those. Now, when we go over our expenditure, we did by $488,000, the town was supposed to reimburse us for that out of the excess cost grant. Is that correct?
Not exactly.
Okay.
The traditional approach to the excess cost is not just related or relegated to out-of-district tuitions. It really is for high-cost students, including those students that are educated within the school district, with OT, PT, speech, all kinds of different things. The transportation costs, all of those types of costs. So in a conversation that I had with the Town Finance Director, I had indicated, you know, we've got a deficit here, however, we've got some savings there. We have had some surplus. If in fact we were in a position where the entire cost of special education was going over budget, then I would have triggered a discussion with Dawn, and we would have started to talk about how much of those dollars from the excess cost would be transferred over to us to reduce those expenditures. So it really is...
We're taking money out of... I understand it's all the town's money, it's one big fungible pot. I agree with that. But we're taking money out of the salary savings and using it to offset tuition for, unexpected tuition for special ed. And I guess what I would like to see us do, if not in this current budget, at least in the future, is as we overrun the costs that we expect in these special education programs, to draw down that excess grant fund money then, even if it means returning a far greater sum at the end of the year. So we at least know that when we overrun it in this pocket, this money is intended for that, we use it. If we have our $566,000 salary savings, I'd rather return that money to the town. Now, I know that it's all the same money, I get that. But I think by accounting for it that way, what my fear is, is because you were, and I don't mean you, I mean the district was so good at managing its money, you were able to create savings and borrow from this account and pay that account. In the future, there may be a time where the town expects us to do that again, and it's going to be different. By applying the money from the excess cost grant directly to the overrun, and then returning what's left at the end of the year, whatever it may be, I think is a much cleaner way to look at from the standpoint of our behavior in the future.
And I think that that's certainly possible. I believe that there would need to be some discussions that laid out an acceptable procedure or practice, or even what trigger points would exist, and that they would need to begin at the board and the funding body level. And then certainly Dawn and I, and the entire administrative teams on both the town and the board side, could assist in coming up with different scenarios. But I'm not sure who made the decision to change the process, but the process had already been changed, as I found out. But again, it can be managed, but you need to set the rules in advance in terms of what the procedures would be acceptable.
And I think that we should spend some time in the next, you know, number of weeks, setting those rules so that if we run into an overrun again, that the money becomes available from the town, that there's a trigger point, and the money that is appropriated for that by the state goes to them. And then if we have money left over at the end of the year, we can give it back because who's to say that because we took $488,000 and gave it to that, that we didn't not buy something we should have bought? Or in the future, wouldn't buy something, you know, that... And so there's a cost to it, to the district. And the town ends up with excess cost grant, and we end up with something, a deficit of something we should have had. So maybe more of that nature. Next. Any other comments? If not, can I get a motion to approve, I guess we'll take these separately, a motion to approve the transfer listed on Page 2 of the end-of-year report dated 8/18/14? Edelwood, second? Young? All those in favor? unanimous? And now we need a motion to approve the end-of-year financial report as presented. I got motion. Sagita, second? Penny? All those in favor? I will make just a comment that normally we don't have motions that get approved in the same meeting, but because this has been talked about and digested over time. Next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do you get a motion to approve of the consent agenda? Penny, second? Ben? All those in favor? unanimous? Announcements and future business.
Sure. So at our next meeting, we will be sharing with you the highlights of our opening of our schools. We will have our students in at that point, our teachers in. We began today, spent all day together as an administrative team, spent the morning looking at our, thinking about our district a little bit, looking at practice of leadership and sort of leading and learning 21st century schools is our theme. We then transitioned to looking at our board of ed and district goals and had teams of folks working together, thinking about some of the goals that are on there and developing action plans around those, which will be presented to you as the year goes forward. Tomorrow, we're spending our day with, together with Todd White, who will be with us on TEPAL, and working on calibrating our administrative team around the teacher evaluation process and things that we have. As Mr. Katz mentioned, on Wednesday, we have our new teachers go back, and the following Monday, all the staff. So next time we meet, we'll share with you some highlights from that opening of school. We'll do, we'll go back to the facilities rental rate. Nancy Steen has also been doing some more research around that as requested, and we'll have some more information to share about those rates and continue that conversation, which we began at our last meeting. And then we'll also, as you mentioned, talk about the grants a little bit, and have some other financial reports to share. Be exciting.
Well, it's an exciting time, I mean, the beginning of the school year. It really is. Convocation is...
Monday morning?
Monday morning.
Yep, convocation, all the staff come back.
It's a lot.
Thanks.
Comments for the public? Hearing none? Can I get a motion to adjourn? Penny, second? Young? All those in favor? Hearing much?